This conference will now be recorded.
Are you, have you gotten your shot yet?
No.
I got mine today.
Where did you go?
A place just off of Mainor Road.
Oh, the big, the big mass, Austin Public Health?
No, it was actually a gym of some sort and basically the fire department and so on and so forth were giving it the shots. They published the fact that they were going to start taking reservations yesterday morning at eight o'clock. And I guess we were one of the first ones to get in. So my wife and I made it down there. We got there for a two o'clock appointment at about 1:15 and we were probably number 500 in line at that time.
Wow. How long did it take 500 to become one?
About a little over an hour and a half.
So.
Well, actually, no, that's, that's not true. They opened the door at two and it was an hour and a half after that, which we had already been waiting 45 minutes. So it was a good amount of time. But at least I'm the first one down.
Yeah, that's John.
It seems to me that it's too bad that Amazon only ships our Christmas presents and they aren't handling this. I feel as though private enterprise would do a much better job.
Yeah, they should train their drivers, yeah. Bamboo.
I got an email from Scott and White that they're now giving it to our class. Our group. I just have to go on and make an appointment.
Which is our group, Charles?
Over 65.
One B.
Way over 65.
What makes you think I'm over 65, Charles?
I don't know, and I'm not particularly concerned.
I see. Just. And surely Erin is not in our group.
Not yet. I'm pretty close to 50, though.
Yeah, but she was enjoying the humor.
So was I.
Did you have any reaction to the shot?
Not so far. Nothing.
You know, my, my wife, who's an RN at Dell Children's, they were, a lot of the, she's a, how old's my wife? My wife is 40. Most of the nurses are younger. They're in their mid to mid twenties, early thirties. And several of them, she said, when they got to the 24 hour mark, after the second, on the second shot, is when they were getting like 24 hour fevers and chills and then going home. And that's the only adverse reactions I've heard of, aside from the one that we all heard about with Ed.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've heard, I've heard that the second shot does get more problems than the first.
You said her arm was pretty sore, but that was it?
Yeah, the variety that they were offering today was Moderna.
I got mine over the, on Christmas Eve. Uh, and I get.
Santa gave it to you?
Yeah, Santa. We have close friends who work high up in Austin Regional Clinic. And on Christmas Eve, like at five o'clock in the afternoon, my husband got a phone call and our friend said, what are you doing right now? Can you leave your house? And, and so we're all like, what's going on? Cause he, he, one of our other friends was, is very ill with cancer. And so we're like, oh no. Um, he's like, no, no, if you want to get the COVID shot, the vaccine, you need to leave right now. We have these vials open. We have this many spots available. We don't have appointments. We can't find anybody to come who's in the selected group. So if you want it, come get it. So we did, and it ended up being nice because we got to go, our friends that, the couple, the husband suffering from cancer went, and then one other couple that were close to went. And so we had a little mini reunion in the Austin Regional Clinic waiting room while we were all waiting to see if somebody was going to have a reaction. So we're all taking bets on who's gonna have an adverse reaction. Luckily nobody. But I get my second shot next Tuesday. So if I'm out for the council meeting, you probably have to cancel the council meeting, so.
Was yours, was yours Moderna or Pfizer?
Moderna.
Welcome all. It's seven o'clock. And do you know where your children are? No.
They're on their way to your house, Gary.
Now's seven o'clock and this is the regular scheduled meeting of the Lago Vista Planning and Zoning Commission. And like to introduce. I'm sorry. I'll tell you what, unless you're going to speak, I would suggest that probably try to keep the, your microphones muted. It's just kind of difficult to see if somebody's trying to get a chance to speak. So that'll work just fine. First of all, like to introduce Tom Monahan and Richard Brown. Larry Hagler. Larry, oh, there you are. Thanks. Charles, I see it says Charlie. I think you're there, Charles.
I am. Can you see me?
Can't see you, but I do hear your charming voice.
That's the first time anyone ever told me that.
Well.
Let's see if I came in. Okay.
There you go. That's, that's in lieu of the raise this year.
Okay.
And now the charming face to go with the charming voice.
There you go. And myself, Gary Zaleski. And we're hoping that Julie Davis, she, before her appointment, she had a business meeting. And as we speak, she should be arriving by air. And she was going to try her best to join us on the phone as soon as she can. So anyway, I just thought I'd let you know that. So it appears that we're all present at this time with the exception of Julie. We also have Roy Jambore, our Director of Development. Erin Salvera, our City Attorney. And David Williams. Glad to see you there tonight, David. Thank you for supporting us and as our liaison to the city. I thought, David, if you wanted to, did you want to make any of your comments? Or did you want to hold those till the end of the?
I'll hold them to the, I'll hold them to the end.
All right, very good. Well, as many of you know, and for those of you that don't, I don't want this to be a shock. But there weren't any further nominations for the Chair and Vice Chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Unless someone would like to come forward at this time and make a further nominations. The nominations that were made on Monday. That was for Tom Monahan as Vice Chair and Gary Zaleski for, to continue as Chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Is any of the other members wanting to make any further nominations at this time? Well, I don't see a lot of microphones coming on. If that's the case, then we'll go ahead and move along with the actual vote. And for those in favor of appointing those two individuals, myself, as well as Tom Monahan, as Chair and Vice Chair, if you would, a voice vote would be just great. Charles, Charlie?
In favor, aye.
Okay. And Richard Brown?
Aye.
How about you, Larry? Larry says aye. Don Jandro?
Aye.
And Don, I'm sorry, did I, did I mention your name as we were kind of calling the role and introducing the members?
No, but that's okay. I'm laying low.
If I, if I didn't, I apologize. You know, I might have, I might have to sell some property one of these days. You just never know.
There you go.
And Tom Monahan?
Aye.
Tom's voting for. And I guess just, and I don't see that Julie's been able to join us yet. But I guess I'll go ahead and vote for myself. Can't think of too many others as distinguished that deserve this. Great. I, I had prepared an inaugural address. However, in consultation with the Vice Chair, he was telling me that just based on COVID and another, other reasons that inaugural addresses aren't too much in fashion these days. So I'll just go ahead. I will publish that on my website, though, my blog. So that those of you who are interested could have an opportunity to read my inaugural address. By the way, that would be my second inaugural address.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to get a signed copy of that, please.
Would you like an eight by 10 glossy to go with that as well?
That would be lovely, Mr. Chairman. Thank you in advance.
Oh, you're more than welcome. Anybody else, you know, if you'll just send a postpaid envelope with, I can't really reveal how much because this is a non-paying position, but you'll, you'll get the bill. Anyway, we're going to move along to the agenda at this time. First of all, that, as you know, citizen comments for non-agenda items. In accordance with the Open Meetings Act, the commission's prohibited from acting or discussing other than factual responses to specific questions. Any item not on the agenda. So are there any citizen comments before we move into the agenda items?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, and who was, oh, Paul Roberts? Yes, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, the city is currently trying to, what's the term, sell a lot of these small little lots that the city owns. And I was just having, I was thinking about this the other day when I, I donated a swing set over to Bowden Point. And it's actually doing quite well there. And if it's possible, and it's a big if, if any of those might be appropriate for like a little neighborhood park for like a seesaw or a swing set or something, and it's in a good location and maybe it could be rezoned to that type of zoning, I would be happy to help turn that into a usable space as is appropriate, if possible, and if it makes sense for the city. So perhaps y'all could have that conversation offline with city staff and see if that's a possibility, if it makes sense. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. All right, we're going to move along into item number one on our agenda. And that is item 20-1725-SP-E. And that's consideration of a special exemption application pursuant to section 11.60 of chapter 14 to allow an increase in the maximum height by Table A of chapter 14 from 15 feet to 21.8 feet for a single-family residence at 8610 Buffalo Trail, Marquee Ranches, Flat 12, Lot 12093. And Roy, I guess, you know, after quite a marathon in the December meeting, is there anything that you can bring to light and add to the briefing that you have already presented? Or if you would just kind of lighten us and maybe condense a little for?
No, sir, but what I would like to do is point out, you know, what has changed in your packet. You had mentioned in the referral motion, giving the neighboring property owner the opportunity to present photographs. We got some of those in time to publish them in the packet and they've been added. There were other ones that were submitted to you, all the members, by email. Conversely, the applicant himself did something similar and those have all been transmitted to you by email. And the staff report has been updated to reflect those historical facts. And everything else is pretty much known to you guys in the interest of time, unless somebody has some questions. I'd rather defer the time and give the public and the applicants the opportunity to speak.
All right, and in terms of the applicant, I know that there was a request for Mr. Howery to speak. And I guess at this point, are you, I'll ask the applicant if they are going to speak. Probably be best to do that and then introduce Mr. Howery.
Mr. Zaleski, this is Randy Howery. And I do intend to make a presentation. In fact, I have a PowerPoint that I'd like to present. I understand perhaps there was some conversation about me being allowed to share screen and use the PowerPoint. Also anticipate that my clients, Britton and Martina Christian, will have something to say. Along with Ron Thrower, who's a consultant for the Christian family, for myself, who also appears on the screen. He wants to say a few things as well. So before the speaking altogether, I anticipate.
Mr. Chairman, I'll go down and start the process to allow him to, to share the screen if you're ready for that now.
That'll be fine. So the applicant will not speak. It will just be his attorney speaking. Is that correct?
Yes.
No, I said, Mr. Zaleski, I said that Britton and Martina will potentially speak. I'm not certain at this point. So I want to rule that out at this point. Depends perhaps on questions and so forth, but they may have a comment or two. Primarily, I'll be speaking.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chair, Ms. Davis has arrived by telephone, I believe.
Well, that's fantastic. Ms. Davis, are you out there?
Yes, I am here.
Oh, wonderful.
So quickly, can I make a quick, we're opening the public hearing. I haven't heard that yet, so.
No, this, this is the applicant's presentation. Tom?
Yes, may I proceed, Mr. Zaleski?
Yes, it, the, being so small, it's hard to identify. Is that?
It's Randy Howery and I'm ready to proceed.
Randy, if you would, if that's you, go ahead and proceed with your PowerPoint or?
Okay. Are you able and are others able to see the PowerPoint on the screen currently?
All I can see is 8610 Buffalo Trail Special Exemption Approval.
Perfect. That's where, that's where I want to start with.
Okay.
And I'll move ahead with some other screens in a second. First of all, thank you for allowing me to have this opportunity to speak for a few minutes. On behalf of the Christian family, Martina and Britton. And as I indicated, Ron Thrower of Thorough Design and Land Planning will potentially speak as well.
And Mr. Howery?
Yes, sir.
Can you give me a general idea about how long your presentation, along with the applicants, will take?
We'll try to keep it to the 10-minute timeframe. Will that work for all?
That'll be fine. I just want a general idea so I can pace the meeting.
Sure. So obviously we're here for the special, special exception approval tonight. And to begin with, let me say that there's no dispute in this case that the property located at 8610 Buffalo Trail, owned by my clients, is 6.8 feet above the permissible level. That was a mistake. The mistake was accidental. It was not intentional. And Mr. and Ms. Christian played no part, had no fault in the cause of this mistake. Of course, tonight, we're not here to talk about who caused the mistake or who didn't cause it, who's responsible for it and who is not. The real issue, as I understand it from the packet, is this issue to be considered by the planning and zoning this evening. And the issue to be considered is whether the additional height of 6.8 feet above what is allowed by chapter 14 and .88 feet above the height of the residence on the adjacent property to the north has a significant adverse impact on the view of another property owner or the architectural context of the surrounding neighborhood. You note, you will note that I have emphasized in red ink certain terms, and I will do that during the course of this PowerPoint presentation. In this case, that is ultimately the analysis that you are making is whether or not this height difference is a significant adverse effect, impact on the view of neighboring landowners. The next screen, we'll see the definition of view. And this is the definition you will find in chapter 14 of the Lago Vista ordinances. I don't need to read the whole thing, but I will point out the emphasis that I have made to the language involved. That the view is defined as the allowed maximum building height on an intervening property where a view is being evaluated. The view being evaluated is the view from 21 Fabo 2 Bullet Cove. And the intervening property is the property at 8612 Buffalo Trail. The other definition I want to make sure, or at least word in this definition, I want to make sure emphasize, is that is the word allowed. You'll note that the definition uses that word. It's not the actual built size. It is the allowed maximum building height that has to be evaluated. And that will be of importance as I move forward in these, in this presentation. This is a current view of the house at 8610 Buffalo Trail owned by my clients. Britain, there's been some reference in the packet that Britain Christian is a home builder himself. While he's involved in that trade, he's a drywall contractor. He does not build homes. He did not build this home. Mr. and Ms. Christian have saved their entire adult lives to build this home. And they were prepared to move into this home as early as October 26th of this year, when events led to their being denied that opportunity. Here's a timeline and it doesn't include all dates, and I want to make sure that's clear. I'm not trying to leave dates out, cover things up. These are important dates. And there may be other questions about the timeline, but I wanted to make sure you're aware of these dates. The building permit for this property was issued on March the 9th, 2020. And construction on the house began shortly thereafter. On May 22nd, 2020, the city was made aware of a potential height issue by the property owner at Bullet Cove. My clients were not made aware of that issue at that time. And were in fact not made aware of any issue until much later. Four and a half months later, on October 7th, 2020, the city inspected 8610 Buffalo Trail regarding height issue. And on October 20th, for the first time, my clients became aware of a potential violation by the city. As indicated earlier, their moving date was planned for October 26th. Obviously, they were unable to do so. On November 5th, they filed their application for a special exception for which we're here tonight. For reference, you'll see, and you folks are probably all familiar with Bullet Cove and Buffalo Trail. 8610 being my client's property, 8612. And then the complaining party at 21 Fabo 2 Bullet Cove. Just for reference purposes, I wanted you to see this. What you see on this particular screen are the right side elevations, first at the top of 8612 Buffalo Trail. This I will identify as the intervening property that has to be considered when evaluating the view issue for the property at 21 Fabo 2 Bullet Cove. And then below that is the right side elevation of 8610 Buffalo Trail, my client's property. What we have done with these drawings is we have overlaid the two right side elevation views. First in the red ink is my client's property, 8610. And then in the green, 8612. And we've identified the, the height, the ridge height for each of those properties. I will enlarge that right corner of that overlay screen that you were just looking at. And what I will point at, again, starting from the top, is the actual highest ridge height of 8610 Buffalo Trail is 1,037.06 feet per survey of 111, 2021. And you'll see the line, blue line, addressed to the red line. That being the actual height of my, the highest ridge point for my client. The second block is the maximum ridge height allowed, not actual, but allowed, above the highest point of lot at 8612 Buffalo Trail. And then the lowest block, blue block, is the actual ridge height of 8612 Buffalo Trail. And by doing some simple math, and you'll hear more about this in a moment, the difference between the actual highest ridge height at 8610 and the max ridge height allowed at 8612 is .21 feet, or 2.52 inches. And again, we'll demonstrate in a moment the significance of that. But the point is that the difference between the maximum or the actual, my client's property and the maximum allowed at the adjacent property is 2.52 inches. Now, as I indicated, Ron Thrower is a consultant for my client and for myself. And Mr. Thrower has prepared a couple of exhibits. I'll move to the first and ask Mr. Thrower to turn on his mic. And I'm going to allow him to explain what he did in the next two exhibits to further illustrate the issues with which we're dealing today. Ron?
Thank you, Randy. Commissioners, my name is Ron Thrower. Thrower Design Land Planners here in Austin. We were asked to look at, you know, the difference in the height and the impacts that the height of the property 8610 Buffalo Trail would have on the property on Bullet Cove. And if you took, you know, if you look at all the elevations and all the data that, that we had available to us, including the building permit plans for all the structures. If you look at the property on Bullet Cove and you assume that there is a second story there and you assume that somebody's eye height is five feet above that second story, then you can see that dash line that cuts across and that's the view line of the property at Bullet Cove. And the property in the middle being the intervening structure at 8612 Buffalo Trail. And the property in the middle being the intervening structure at 8612 Buffalo Trail, you can see in there that we have the maximum allowed height shaded in gray, but the actual structure doesn't take up that entire volume, that entire mass of what is allowed. Especially if you look on the southern end of the building, which is on the left-hand side of the exhibit, that butterfly roof is higher on the north end and lower on the left. And that does provide a greater view line available to the Bullet Cove property, but it doesn't, it's not a part of the view as defined by the Land Development Code. And so if you took, if you take the maximum allowed height on 8612 Buffalo Trail on the left side, there's the point of maximum impact to the view. And then we projected that onto the 8610 Buffalo Trail property and how much height is protruding above that sightline. If you'll go to the next slide, please. The exhibit that was in the packet that showed the view from the property at Bullet Cove and then looking at the impacts from the sightline exhibit that the previous slide. What's shown in brown here is the maximum allowed height on 8612 Buffalo Trail. And projecting that view, the view shed from the Bullet Cove property and how that looks upon the house at 8610, it's not a significant impact, in my opinion. I would agree that the view shed that they have is greater than the view that's allowed by code. But if you look at, if you take the code, specific code language about the maximum loud height of the intervening structure, this portrayal is more in line with how the code says to look at the intervening structure. And with that, I'll turn it back over to Randy.
We forwarded these photographs, thank you, Ron. We forwarded these photographs earlier today. Hopefully, you have received a copy of them. If not, I'll be happy to provide a copy of any of these exhibits, but particularly these last two prepared by Mr. Thrower. It's important that you have them. What follows are a series of photographs. My clients were invited over by the owner of 21502 Bullet Cove to look at this issue from their perspective. And so my clients then were able to take a series of photographs. And I include those photographs for illustrative purposes mostly, but also they're informative. And it gives you some perspective of about, as it's currently constructed, what their view looks like from different vantage points. I'll scroll through these. This again is taken inside of 21502 Bullet Cove. There is a light view, as you can see, from their second floor. And again, another photograph from the same perspective. This is a panoramic view from the home at 21502 Bullet Cove. And then what follows is they also own a lot there, is my understanding, and this is a panoramic view from that lot. So what I'm going to do now before I close is I'm going to ask my clients to unmute themselves. And then I'll come back to this final screen and I'll close. But Britain or Martina, Britain or Martina, if you have any comments, this is your opportunity.
Not at this time.
Martina, do you have anything?
No, I don't.
Okay. So here's where we are. And I understand you folks have to make difficult decisions all the time, and perhaps this is one. And I go back to the original slide that I shared. And the question is, is there a significant adverse impact? Again, not forgetting that a mistake was made here. Again, I'll emphasize my clients did not make that mistake themselves. They built their dream home, the home they dreamed about for years and years. And this thing is finished and ready for them to go, for them to move in. They certainly had plans to be in there for the holidays. Instead, they lived it for a while in a, you know, recreational vehicle parked in front and then moved into their daughter's apartment for the remainder. That's where they are now. They want to move into their home. They've spent their life savings on this. It's ready. And so the question is, not whether a mistake was made or who's at fault. The question is, is there a significant adverse impact to the view of the property owner at 21502 Bullet Cove? And I would submit, as Mr. Thrower indicated, that 2.52 inches effectively, based upon the definitions provided in Law of Vista Ordinances, is not a significant adverse impact. And we'll request that there's special exception be approved. And with that, I'll close. And I'll turn the screen off.
If you would, Mr. Howery. Once again, what was the name, spelling of the last name of the gentleman who was speaking? It was Tom. Is that correct?
It's Ron Thrower. Thrower, T-H-R-O-W-E-R.
And he resides in Austin, correct?
Yes, yes. Ron, you can identify. I'm sorry. You speak for yourself.
No, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure I had the name in there correctly for the record.
Yes, sir.
Some of us are maybe a little more hearing challenged than others as we get into some of our advanced years. I guess what I would like to do at this point is just a couple of comments. First of all, when we move into the actual public hearing, I would like to be sure that for those individuals who have already spoken at the previous hearing, if you have some new information or if you would like to make some statements, if, as I say, if it's not anything relatively new and it's just really a reminder of what was brought up at the last meeting, if you would try to keep your comments relatively brief. And at this time, after the applicant presentation, I think I'm going to ask those commissioners, if you do have questions of either the staff or of the applicant, could certainly do so. And you might want to be sure to direct your question or comment to either the owner's attorney or to the owner themselves. So, Tom, I thought I saw you waving your vice hand.
Yeah, it was just a quick question, and it may not sound relevant to the case, but when we get to discuss this, it may be. I wanted to ask Mr. Christian, I know he planted some trees around there, and there's one in particular on the side of the house, between his house and the house immediately next door. I was curious what kind of tree that was. Couldn't tell if that was a live oak or something else.
At this point, I haven't planted any additional trees on our property.
Okay.
Except for the small plants that are in the front, in the mulch, and in the front flower bed.
Okay.
There are no additional trees have been added by me.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question for Roy.
Yes.
What is your determination of the difference between what is allowed by code and the bridge line of the house?
The application is accurate. That was derived by a registered professional land surveyor. It happens to be, the only estimates I ever did during this process had to do with the finished floor slab. And that information from the surveyor is reasonably consistent with what I guessed the additional height of the floor slab was. I have no reason to question the accuracy of the surveyor's document. This application is based on that. We insisted that it be based on that.
Okay. Is that survey in our packet?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I even circled the relevant points, I think.
I believe so, Roy. Okay, is there another commissioner that had either a question of the staff? Yes, Richard Brown.
Thank you. I would like to clarify a point made by Mr. Howery in his packet that there was a four and a half month lapse or gap in time between when the city found out that this house may be too tall and when they were able to notify the builder and/or the owner. Could you please speak to that, Roy?
We began notifying the permit holder immediately, as soon, you know, starting May 22nd. I don't know how relevant it is, but we certainly, we have documentation in our files that are a little bit different from what Mr. Howery presented. I'll leave it at that.
Well, that had been my understanding was that there had been an exchange of information virtually immediately upon finding out, and I just did not want to leave that allegation out there that the owner was unaware and that either he didn't know or his builder didn't know or neither one of them knew what we believe was public record at that time, at least in terms of exchange of information at that time, shortly after having been notified by the party who brought this to our attention. I would also like to say that the Mr. Howery referred to the owners of the property on Bullet Cove as complainants or something like that. The issue is not between that owner and your client. It is actually between the city and your client that they may feel like they are an injured party, but they are not complainants in this matter. This is just a a matter of whether or not the ordinances were followed, whether or not the house ended up getting, I guess it's, I guess it's an agreed point that the house is 6.8 feet too tall, but then the question becomes the view, but it's as interpreted by the staff and not by the owner and occupant of the property on Bullet Cove. They are not part of the determination of whether or not the home your client built is in compliance with our ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Seleski, may I respond?
Certainly.
I apologize if I mischaracterized the labels of folks involved in this. I didn't intend to make any comment by doing so. The point I do want to respond to, Mr. Brown, is this, that with regard to the timeline and that four and a half month gap, I could be missing some dates, and I'm happy to be corrected if I have. But what we understand is that between May the 22nd of 2020 and October the 7th of 2020, there was perhaps an email from Mr. Finney that emailed my client, Mr. Christian, and asked a couple of questions and made a couple of comments. He said he was reviewing the permit at 8610 Buffalo, and that he needed a survey. And then he requested an upload of the engineer foundation inspection. There wasn't an issue raised that the house was not compliant. There wasn't an issue raised that something needs to be addressed or an exception needs to be raised now. It's simply a request for information. And immediately upon receiving that, my client forwarded that to his contractor. The contractor is not participating in this. My understanding is the contractor at least uploaded the engineer foundation inspection report. Did not do so with the actual survey. But my clients were not told anything else by letter, by email, or in person until October the 20th of 2020. And that's when they first became aware that there was a potential issue and a potential violation of city code. And that's the reason I prepared the timeline as I did. There may have been communications back and forth between my clients and the city. In fact, we know that there are various inspections being done at the house during that time period. And there were certainly communications, but communications regarding whether there's a height issue or not is what I would argue they did not receive until later in October of 2020. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Howery. Roy, if I could, please. You know, there's so much material and so much that we have covered and so much hiking as we've done around the property, properties. Just a couple of things, maybe if you can help clarify. You know, I have the residential plan review that was dated March 9th and in that, it says that have any variances been approved by the city? And at that point, it says no. And I'm looking at the front elevation, I believe, that was submitted. And it has maximum ridge height of 25 feet. I think it says 5 inches. Are those documents correct, Roy?
Yes, sir. And I even put the review in there. And what you have in there, the original site plan, those are the ones that show the house to be less than 15 feet with the big red circles on it. It shows the highest ridge and all that. And you'll see it had, I put the date on there, 10/3 of 19. That's.
Understood. I guess looking at the front elevation plan, I assume that was submitted at the same time.
Yes, sir. Right. Whether that was revised subsequent because of this application, I don't think it was. But, you know, that's not what I put in your packet to show what was permitted.
Understood. Okay, thank you. Before we move on to continuing the public hearing, I guess I wanted to see if any of the commissioners had any further questions or comments to either the owners or their counsel. Yes, Mr. Jondro?
Yes, I'm just having a little bit of a, and I understand what Richard's.
Yes, I'm just having a little bit of a, and I understand what Richard said a little bit ago. But we do have the the resident at 21502 complaining about the loss of perspective or the loss of the view. And it seems that Mr. Howery took the photograph that we have that's labeled after construction. And then somehow or another, put brown lines or whatever around it to make it look like 8610 is only two and a half inches invading the view. And I have a hard time rationalizing that because quite clearly the photograph was taken from some height, I assume it was taken from the second floor. And there certainly is more than two and a half inches obstructing the view. How do we rationalize that?
If I met Mr. Zaleski and Mr. Jondro, if I can allow Mr. Thrower to address that issue, I think he's much more capable than I.
Right. Commissioners, the sightline exhibit that I provided is a depiction of taking an eyeball height on the Bullet Cove property and projecting that across the intervening structure's maximum allowable height. And yes, it is different than the two and a half inches that Mr. Howery had laid out. Now, the impact on the view shed is maybe the northernmost elevation of 8610 Buffalo Trail is probably a projection of about one foot above the view line along that northern face of 8610. Now, the two and a half inch difference that Mr. Howery was referring to is the two and a half inch difference in height when you compare 8610 and 8612. It's just what is the maximum height elevation of both of those structures or the maximum allowable height? And so if you look at, if you look at that two and a half inches, but you're projecting, your eye view projection is at an angle, then the difference in elevation, which is shown on that exhibit with the brown intervening structure, the difference in elevation across the view shed of that northern face of 8610 is greater than two and a half inches. But again, that two and a half inches is only the difference in elevation of the two structures at 8610 and 8612.
So what you're saying is that the eye line that you're talking about would be significantly lower than what this camera shot is?
No, the eye line that I'm taking into account is pretty much exactly where that camera or where that picture is taken from. Because if we can pull up my exhibit, I think I can walk through that issue a little bit better.
Sure. Can we share the screen again and I can pull?
Can we get back to the facts that affect this action? Sightlines are irrelevant.
Okay.
The issue is, was this house built higher than it was permitted? Is that a fact? How much higher was it? What are those facts?
It is not disputed that the house was built 6.8 feet above.
Okay, so the foundation is eight feet above where it was supposed to be?
6.8 above.
Okay. And the result is the house is that much higher than it was supposed to be based on the permit?
Right.
The original permit? Who's responsible for? Who's responsible for building the house higher than it was permitted?
Excuse me, the slab is not 6.8 feet taller than it was supposed to be.
Okay.
Houses is taller. And I think what they're trying to say is that her view by your code is if there's an intervening building is above that house's maximal height is what they're trying to say, that the slab of the house.
This doesn't relate to any other houses up there right now. What I'm trying to determine is, did they follow the permit? If they did not, what was, in fact, the change in altitude of the house?
The house was built per plans that were approved by the city of Lago Vista.
Right, but at a specific altitude?
At the height, we are at the height we were approved by the city of Lago Vista.
It was not built at that height. The foundation is not at that height. That's why we're here.
No, sir. So what happened is the only reason we're here is we moved landscaping in the front of the home to create a retaining wall. And we moved dirt to fill in the backfill.
That is incorrect. The foundation is at a point, an altitude. We should know what that altitude is. The top of the house is an altitude. We should know what that altitude is. Do those comply with the permit?
Yes, they do.
Yes, they do.
The survey that was submitted after
The altitude is the foundation at the altitude it was supposed to be.
Yes.
Charles, if we could kind of get back to some order and let's be, like you say, very specific of what we're dealing with. We are asking the the owners of this property are asking for a special exception. Unfortunately, they're asking for this special exception after the fact. And that's what this commission needs to decide as to whether or not they will or will not grant this special exception to allow this house at 21.8 feet. That's really where we're at. So I guess what I would like to do at this point, unless there are other commissioners that need to ask questions because we're still, have not moved on from the applicant presentation, if there's commissioners that have any other questions of either the owner or their attorney and the staff to kind of ask that question and try to keep it brief. Richard?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My question is for the Christians. Each of you said that the foundation is not six feet eight higher than it should have been. And we agree with that. We agree that it's only about three feet or less higher than it ought to be. But you also said that the house was built according to the plans, but if the slab is only let's just call it 30 inches taller than was agreed upon with the application, I'm not sure how the house turned out to be 6.8 feet higher, taller than was agreed upon as part of the application. If you, if as you claim the house was built according to the plan, because something had to happen between approximately 30 inches of the slab being too high and the roof being 6.8 feet too high. And I'm not sure how that happened, but if you'd care to speak to that, I'd be glad to hear it.
The original survey that was submitted with our site plans and the new survey that was required after October were using two different benchmarks. And I think that it was difficult to compare the two results because of the fact that they were using two different benchmarks. So there is not an official comparison between the slab height. So that's an assumption that we made based on the results of the new survey compared to the old survey, but there's not the city didn't require a certified survey when we submitted our site plans. So we don't have something to compare the October 1 to prior to our build. So that's where that comes into question. The high point on our lot was moved. So the house is built exactly the height that we thought that it was going to be built to all along. The city knew it was going to go that high in the air. The problem is we're comparing it to a different high point in our property because once our high point was disturbed, they no longer let us use that as our high point. We had to go to the next highest point, which was significantly lower than what was there originally.
Thank you very much. And I'll tell you what, we're going to move along. I want to remind the commissioners that what we are considering is to grant either approval or disapproval of an increase in height. Unfortunately, the reason this has gone, as far as it has, is because the applicant never made an application for exceeding and a special, to exceed and to get a special exception. So in terms of what the construction was and how it ended up, I think we can think back and forth about that all we want to. The point is that it is there and it is this difference in height. And we're listening to the owners of the property along with their counsel. And at this point, we are going to move along and we're going to continue the public hearing. And I think there's plenty of time during our discussion phase if the commissioners have other comments that they would like to put forward. So at this point, we're going to continue the public hearing at 7:56 PM. And if you would, those that are going to speak during the public hearing, as I said, if there's something new and or just to summarize quickly what you might have spoken in the past, if you'll just kind of signal by raising your hand, I hope that, you know, those of you that are there are either able to get online, so I can see that. But if you can kind of wave a hand in front of the screen and I can recognize those individuals and you can give your name and address. So at this time, any comments from the public? Well, I'm surprised. Oh, is that Jennifer Brown?
Yes.
Jennifer Brown? Yes.
Jennifer Brown. I live at 8612 Buffalo Trail and are immediately adjacent to the Christians' home. I just wanted to read a statement. Regardless of what happens with this case, the city of Lago Vista really must act to prevent similar code ordinance violations from continuing to occur by putting some kind of processes in place and having adequate and knowledgeable staff to halt, deter, and stop construction when violations occur as well as possible penalties for failure to comply. Should we not require polls for all construction projects? If this is such an issue and we've talked about heights in several meetings for several months, maybe we should require ridge polls for all new projects. If an inspection is missed or failed, how can construction be allowed to continue without penalty? Council members are on record as stating that they want to protect lake views and property values. And yet here we are again discussing that very topic. If no action is taken, property owners will continue to be victimized and told they are protected by city ordinances and then have their views blocked by the same builder knowingly exploiting the system and profiting from it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Brown. All right, I'm looking to see if there's any other comments. Is that Sarah? Yes, if you would, please.
Thank you, committee members. And I'll make this very brief. Originally, when we sent those photos, those were from earlier in the summer and we weren't currently in Lago Vista now that we are. I didn't even realize that the home had been marked. And just as sure as you guys had seen in those exhibits, where the house is and where it's supposed to be is taped by green and red. And from our view and not just from my viewpoint, which most of those photos weren't from a five-foot viewpoint, some were elevated and some were taken from a six-foot-four viewpoint. Regardless, we can't even see the green tape from our home. So our view would have never our view would have never been, I guess, interfered with or encroached had it actually been built under the city ordinances in general. So, I mean, as much as I'd like to say that we know the facts, the house is 6.8 feet higher. The city wasn't notified until later in the project. It wasn't in the permits. It wasn't supposed to be permitted to be that high. And I'd just like to reiterate, since I was asked to submit photos, even the photos don't truly give our views justice of how I guess, much of an encroachment it is. As you guys have passed by my house, I'm sure, and walked on the property, that you guys may have noticed that our house doesn't even have blinds or curtains because we enjoy our view so much. And I understand that you guys have no judgment over deed restrictions, but the deed restrictions as well as the ordinances were all put in place to protect this very reason, to stop this very meeting from having to happen to begin with. That is all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. All right, I'm trying to watch to see if either somebody unmutes or gives a signal to, is that Mr. Roberts?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Solomon, Charles posed a question. He said, who's to blame for this? Mrs. Brown, she spoke about the importance of ensuring that citizens are protected from builders who are unscrupulous or deviant criminals, et cetera. The answer to Charles' question, based on my own personal experience, and I can assure you my in-depth knowledge of Matthew Ridgway of True Homes, formerly of North Shore Homes, that man probably kept his clients in the dark. He's screwed people on that street, me and many other people in this town. I hope that if anything positive comes from this meeting tonight is motivation on behalf of the city to rein in builders like him. And if the Christians or anybody else, if there's any criminal wrongdoing, any referrals to be made by the city or citizens, I encourage them to make those referrals to John Hunt, Assistant DA Travis County, who's investigated him previously. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Any other folks out there in the public that are either logged in, unmuted, that would like to make a comment? If not, we're going to close the public hearing at 8:03. We will now move into a discussion phase. And I'm sure there are commissioners that either want to discuss or make a point. And I guess what I would ask is, let's try not to go over and not necessarily whip a dead horse or resuscitate a dead horse or exhume a dead horse. So, any discussion at this point? Yes, Tom?
I'd remember to unmute. Yeah, it's unfortunate we're in this place because I would guess, no matter how we vote, one side is going to hate us and one's going to love us. So it puts us kind of in a bad position. But nonetheless, trying to evaluate this height exception, trying to keep in mind trying to keep in mind what we might have done if this house just had a single ridge pole, what would we have done? I think, but we don't have a ridge pole, we got the whole house to look at. We got the benefit, more photos than we ever get for normally. Probably we wouldn't have any photos to look at in an original determination. So we'd had to try to imagine what things look like. So, I've been studying the photos carefully since we do have them. I've been looking at my memory of being out there and looking and being impressed just by the the quality of the views in general out there, for those fortunate enough to live on hillsides and so forth. That's, it's an incredible view. And however, if I evaluate the view, there, 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 in this case, there is an adverse impact. But the question in my mind is, is it really significant or not? And in trying to determine whether it's significant or not, I guess, you know, from our last meeting, when I heard about a view of the Colorado River and the lake, when I was expecting pictures to show maybe this large continuous flow of water through the river, but there really wasn't any, there's, there's like a couple of patches of water, kind of like the type of view I have of my own house, and one side or the other. And I also noted that back when the complaint was made, the lake level was at 672 feet, I went back and checked. And then the lake level today is 659 feet. So it's, what's that, 13 feet below where it was before? And I took that context into looking at some of the picture, earlier pictures that Sarah had sent us and some of the more current ones. And you can see that their view of the lake is really dependent on the level of the lake, at least in my view. So it's not like it's, it's this constant view year-round. It's all dependent on how full the lake is as part of it. The other thing was, you know, it's a, it's a wide panoramic view from that place. And when you, and in the context of a panoramic view, this house is a, it minimizes the entire view. I think it, to me, that makes it less significant because of the totality of the view. And earlier on, you know, I asked Mr. Christian about that tree and what it was. Another thing to consider is, this may be a temporary situation anyway because if the tree that's there now, or if he changes the tree, you know, it could grow easily, be taller than the house, and that would block the view. And if there was any trees, that would block the view. And there is no protection for views from the growth of trees. So, you know, that kind of, kind of weighed on my thinking as well. So, I think with the totality of the view as in trying to put myself in that place, I guess what I'm saying is, I'm probably on the side of supporting the exception. And two, the couple of the commenters, or the, I think it was Ms. Brown, we recognize that there are some shortcomings in our ordinances and processes. And we've already begun some discussions on those issues. So we are, we're certainly, this case in particular really highlights some of those shortcomings. So we're working on it. But anyway, that's kind of my approach to evaluating this whole situation. And so I guess I may pull my nose because we even have to make this decision now. But I think I'm going to go ahead and support the exception.
Thank you, Tom. And are there other commissioners that are wanting to make?
I've got one question as a point of order. Did our newest members of the commission, have they gone out there to see the house?
Thank, thank you, Tom. Yes, once again, just to remind all the commissioners that you, in order to vote one way or another on this issue, you must have observed and been to the property. I was out again today and I made sure that the notice, the big yellow sign was put back in place that was laying down on the property. So all the commissioners do understand that, that they needed to visit the property. I'll take that as a yes. Are there other discussions from commission members at this point?
Mr. Commissioner, I think I would like to note that since being appointed to the commission, I have not been to the property. So I want to let you know that I've been traveling for work and haven't had the opportunity.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Davis. Any anyone else? Well, if that's the case, then I guess I'll just make a few of my comp. Well, then I'm preempted by, by Richard Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I thought perhaps someone else would like to speak before I muddle the water. But anyway, I have, I agree with Tom that everyone on that hillside has an expansive view in one direction or another. I know that the further away a house is, in your view, the, the less offensive it seems. I live on a hilltop myself and I am fortunate to be able to look over the top of all my nearest neighbors. I I could not follow the presentation by Mr. Thrower. Perhaps it's because, I'm not sure, the vantage point from which he made his observations near the property on Bullet Cove, on the vacant lot or on, on that property. But despite the fact that they still have an expansive view, I, I feel as though that house is very much within the view of that home. And it, it bothers me to know that it doesn't have to be there. If the foundation had been set at the correct height and if the house had been built according to plans, that house would be 6.8 feet lower. And from the vantage point of the ground floor of the home on Bullet Cove, it would pretty much disappear. You can see from, from a photo presented by Ms. Arius, that they, you can see, barely see the top of those 10 or 12-foot tall windows on the front of the house. So it's my understanding that that was where they had their green tape indicating that that would have been the height of, of the house if everything had been done to plans. And so with, with regard to the analysis done by Mr. Thrower and Mr. Howery, I'm reminded by, I'm reminded of a song that goes, "Who are you going to believe, me or your lion eyes?" And I, when I stand out there, and I've never been on the porch or in the house of the, of the property of the people who called this to our attention in the first place, but I have stood close to it and I've stood on that vacant lot. And I find that house to be prominent. And I, I might have had a different opinion about it if I had seen, if I'd been looking at a ridge pole. But looking at the totality of the house, and I'm not saying that it blocks out the sun from, from that vantage point. I'm just saying that it's there. And it, with regard to the, Tom's point about, well, you can't see the whole lake or a whole long meandering section of the lake. That's absolutely true. But I think it's also true that those people did not want that house in the foreground of their view.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
And I think it shouldn't be, and that's my opinion. I think it should be shorter. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I want to apologize for getting so aggressive. When we're going around in circles, I get frustrated. And that's what we were doing. I agree with Mr. Brown, though. The house, these people should not be here. The way the house was originally set up, it would have complied with the ordinances. That it doesn't comply with the ordinances creates a serious situation for us. If it had been a ridge pole, we might have been able to catch this. But, you know, and it's not just the homes that are there now. Because I, I don't know how many lots are up there, but I walked on a lot of them. This impacts the view. It is in a location where it would do that. If it was on the other side of the street, it probably wouldn't. But that's not the issue. It is where it is. There has to be some respect for our ordinances.
Thank you, Mr. Solomon.
Sorry, I didn't, that's, that's all I have.
Thank you. Those are, any other commissioner going to make a comment or during this discussion period? If, if not, I think I'd like to kind of summarize. You know, there's probably enough blame to go around at this point. I don't, I, I think it's pretty obvious to all of us that we have an owner who's also a contractor. And the, this builder, we have had some pretty reliable people in this discussion this evening have pretty well confirmed to us our suspicions about this particular builder. And I'm not going to mention the name. Certainly don't want to leave myself open for any kind of liable. Plenty enough blame to go around possibly with the city as well. But, you know, we have unbelievable growth going on. And I think there's some unscrupulous people taking advantage of just because we're in a situation where we have phenomenal growth. And I think the city of Lago Vista must develop and adopt a schedule of substantial fines and penalties for these types of blatant violations. And if you would, our liaison, if you would please carry this forward to the city council. And if one or any of us need to attend city council meeting when, to make this comment, would be happy to do so. You know, having lived and still live with vacant buildings and property that's falling into disrepair here in Lago Vista, you know, an example, we go back to the Highland Lakes Clubhouse. What an eyesore and what a terrible situation that was. And how long it took for us to correct that. You know, we can ill afford to let a beautiful home such as this fall into disrepair and just become another abandoned white elephant within Lago Vista. You know, and after multiple visits, even today's where I've lost count, you know, I, I'm of an age where I don't go buying green bananas, let alone tromping around up and down these hills. I believe that any negative view is certainly outweighed by not allowing a positive vote for the special exception. So unless there's another comment from the commissioners, I will go ahead and make a motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Brown?
Your summation comment was not clear to me. Would, would you restate that last sentence or two? I, it was not clear to me what you were, what your summation was.
Do we want to replay the recording or do you want me to try to go back and and, and restate what I stated?
I'll, I'll leave it up to you, sir. Thank you.
Roy, are we able to play back the audio?
Sir, I'm afraid we're not.
Oh, well, let me, let me try to say again what I said. I'm not sure how many sentences you'd like to have me go back, Mr. Brown, but I'll, I'll try. And I said that I had made multiple visits, of which I have lost count to the property. And I believe that any negative view is outweighed by not allowing a positive vote for this special exception. I don't want to see a building such as this fall into an abandoned disrepair like we already have in Lago Vista and like we had with the Highland Lakes Golf Course Clubhouse. That's was my point. Do you need to reply back, Mr. Brown?
I'd like to, please. Your point about the Highland Lakes Golf Club is, is certainly an interesting one, although the economic-
It's probably irrelevant.
The economic part of running the golf course may have had more to do with the fact that it fell into disrepair. But your comment seems to make the assumption that that is what would happen, that if the special exception were not granted, that the, that the client would walk away from this house and leave a half-million-dollar house there that could be modified for very much less than that. If, if that were a- much less than that if if that were a an approved remedy.
As you said, Mr. Brown, that is only my assumption.
Thank you.
You know, that's an opinion of mine, as I'm entitled to my opinion, as all the other commissioners are of theirs.
Absolutely, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
All right. Unless there's any further discussion, we'll make a motion that regarding item number 261725-spe, that the Planning and Zoning Commission of Lago Vista grant a special exception application to allow this residence at 8610 Buffalo Trail to go from the allowable 15 feet to 21.8 feet, a single family structure. I see Tom Monahan.
That's a second.
It's been moved and seconded. I would just before we move to any discussion on this motion, I would ask if the city attorney feels that this motion is in order.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, your motion is clear.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All right. All in favor, starting with Tom Monahan?
Aye.
Richard Brown? And Larry Hagler? Is very quiet. Did Larry vote yes? I'm sorry, did somebody hear his vote?
I thought he said yes, but I wasn't clear. Raise your hand if it's yes, Larry.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Larry.
I think he said something about holding his nose, but that was the other part of it.
I know, I think that was Charles. Charles Solomon?
No.
Don Jandro? And unfortunately, Julie Davis cannot vote. And Gary Zaleski votes yes. That's if I count correctly, one, two, three, four to the affirmative, and one, two. Did I get that correctly?
Yes, you did.
So the motion carries. Thank you very much. We have had a request for a a brief recess, and we will come back to our commission meeting at 8:33.
It was a tough one for you guys.
Paul.
Yes, Patty, good evening.
Good evening. I missed what the motion was. Could you reaffirm, please? What did they what was the motion?
It passed four to two.
But what was the motion?
It passed in the affirmative to approve the application for a variance.
Okay. Thank you, Paul.
They all left, huh?
Yeah, they did. You know, for any.
We can deal with all the rest of the items on there if we can do it before they get back.
Well, this well, while Gary and Richard don't have time to flirt with one another, we can knock some stuff out.
Oh, Lord.
They just like messing with each other. They're actually very good friends.
I know. It's it's quite entertaining. For any citizens listening, I would encourage you, don't ever hesitate when you're aware of a scoundrel in your community to speak out in government venues such as this. You can research the anti-slapp laws, which was enacted by the Texas Legislature a few years ago. You needn't worry yourself about libel complaints when petitioning your government for specific action or direction, including advising them with what you believe to be so. The rules are very liberal in that regard.
But but Paul, here's the problem. Nothing ever happens.
That's because he's a very good ex-felon criminal.
He keeps on keeping on, Paul.
Who? Matt Ridgeway of North Shore Homes, now True Homes.
Yes.
Travis County just got through, they almost foreclosed on his house for unpassed due taxes from 2017. I know for a time he hadn't filed any IRS income tax returns. I hope they're listening.
Well, it's just ridiculous. I mean, for example, my house is barely four years old, and all of the deck boards are popping up because they use the wrong kind of screws. But you call Matt about it, and it's just not his problem.
Well, that's the thing. I guarantee you, I'll bet you anything, Matt was telling these 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 applicants, well, like that four month gap where Roy said that he was talking to the city, I suspect they were reaching out to Matt. And I guarantee I'll bet you anything, just like Matt would do with my attorneys, he just wouldn't reply. And he probably.
Exactly, and mine, and mine as well.
He probably kept the homeowners in the dark. I mean, you know all about all the.
Actually, they probably used the wrong lumber on your deck.
Exactly.
Well, everyone to the regular meeting, Planning and Zoning Commission, it's 8:33, and we are back live and in person. All right, we're going to move forward with item number two, which is 20-1726-raz, R-raz, 20-1739, consideration of a recommendation regarding a zoning district change request from RD, from R-1D, single family residential, and TR-1, temporary restricted to P2 Park and Greenbilt District Passive, and C-2, commercial, large scale with design approval and property located at 20700 Northland Drive, Lago Vista Estates, Section 6, Lot 1874, and a portion of the property platted as tract A, separating this lot from both 7600 and 7608, Lowman Ford wrote. And Roy?
Yes, sir. As you will recall, there was a a list of things that we thought were missing and or deficient that we asked the applicants to address. We took a highlighted portion of the staff report and emailed it to the applicant's representative. They did have one of the items, which was the existing tree survey. And not too terribly long ago, they emailed us back and said they need more time to prepare the documents that and responses that we asked for and wanted to ask you to defer the consideration of this application to the next meeting. In all honesty, in having worked with these guys for a long time, it's not the applicants. Their engineers really are that slow. It's, you know, they're not there. This is not abnormal and not surprising.
Certainly not a Casey Jones. It's meaning engineer, I'm sorry.
Yes, I understand. They're every every time we've asked them to address issues, it's it's it takes a very long time for them to do anything.
So I guess any of the commission members would like to get clarification and speak to Roy. If Roy, if you would just, you know, kind of help me a little bit, you know, you had listed some potential alternative recommendations.
Right.
And there, you know, there's there's quite a bit there to consider.
Yeah, the the big issues had to do with the fact that, you know, that that detention pond is both a detention pond and a water quality pond. And that is, in fact, where all the runoff is supposed to be collected and and the contaminants Unfortunately, we we have a landscaping ordinance that, depending on what that looks like, has a variety of different requirements. And the engineers haven't actually designed that pond yet. Okay, we don't know how deep it is. We don't know whether there's walls or anything like that, whether there's going to have to be a guardrail. We need that information, and then they're going to have to react to it and and provide the landscaping, not just that is required by the ordinance as a minimum, but because you have the design review in front of you also that relates to that piece of property. They've got to show us that they're making something that's compatible with the residential property that's around there. The other issue, you may remember that they kind of used an ambiguous designation for the finishes that are both on the side of the building and the back. And although the state legislature will not allow us to restrict or dictate materials, your design review ordinance says that if they're going to use materials that are foreign to residential construction, that they've got to buffer that and conceal it from those residential properties. So the point was, we asked them to either use different materials or show us the landscaping that's going to or or other methods of screening the back and the sides of that building. And we don't have it yet. Those were the big issues.
And and Roy, so in our potential recommendations, when we're talking about the inclusion of sufficient details of the depth and designs, the clarification of the precise nature of the exterior finish and acknowledgement of Lowman Ford right of way, those are the ones that were of the greatest concern.
Yes, sir. And and because those are part of your now inclusive design review, you cannot give the new zoning classification to that little bit that's additional, the addition of the C2, you can't move that forward without them meeting those design criteria. They must do it simultaneously.
Other commissioners, any questions of the staff at this point? Yes, Mr. Brown?
Thank you. Roy, just just so I'll know, is the detention pond served by surface drains out on the apron and and from the scuppers on on the roof? Or is it surface drainage?
We don't know. That's what we're asking for. We've got we've got no information on that detention pond.
Yeah, I know. There were no drains shown on the on the plat that they are the.
Right. They they are in what we call site development plan review and have been for a long time. This started with way too much building and paving that would fit on that lot where it was unsafe for the vehicles. And, you know, we went round and round and round about that. And they they got additional property and they they finally, you know, made it where, you know, the the fuel trucks wouldn't kill people, you know, when when they were both on the site at the same time and and that sort of thing. And, you know, as a result, the the detention pond just, you know, got to be nothing more than a shape, you know, on the plan. It is it has not been designed yet, not not to any degree of sufficiency.
Okay, thanks. I was concerned because I I know that at least two of the neighbors who have commented about the project have mentioned runoff issues, not just water, but also petrochemicals.
And all that, that's what that water quality pond will take care of.
If we if we get into it.
Yeah. And and there and there, just to remind you, there was and is a TIA that has been done.
Yes.
Recommended improvements are, in fact, reflected. That's one of the few things that are done.
Yeah, saw that. Thank you.
Any other questions of the staff at this point before we move on to the applicant presentation? If that's the case, then if we could ask the applicant to make their presentation.
I don't think he's here unless I'm missing something.
Well, this particular case, Roy, as I understand it, this is for us to, you know, make a specific recommendation, pass it on to the city council.
Yes, sir. I I don't know that you can, let me put it this way, I don't know that you could possibly forward a positive recommendation on to the city council with with that much missing material, but that that that's your call.
That's correct. And I think some of the guidance we've been given is to be able to, as an example in our potential recommendations, we'd have to be very specific with those as as listed and enumerated, correct? Roy?
Roy, is it correct that this applicant has requested to have the tonight's consideration defer until next month's meeting?
Yes.
Not a requirement that you defer it, Mr. Chairman, but that's what they've requested.
Right.
So at this.
No, they're not ready.
Would would we would we just go ahead and continue the public hearing as stated, counselor?
Yes, sir. Yes, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Well, then we'll just go ahead and continue the public hearing at this point.
And. Do you need a motion and all that?
Yes, sir. Someone will need to make a motion that we postpone action on this item until next month's regular scheduled meeting.
Would we not continue the public hearing?
If there's someone who wants to make a comment on on this particular item, yes, Mr. Chairman, you would. You could take any public comments. In fact, you're required to allow for public comment on this item before you anyone makes a motion on how you want. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Is there anyone that would like to make a public comment? I know we had several at our last meeting. If anyone would like to add to that?
Yes, I would.
Okay, so we're going to continue the public hearing at 8:44. And if you'd identify yourself, please.
Yes, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry. Is it which one is it?
Sherry.
Yes, Sherry Jander, 20802 Northland Drive. And I had a question. I understand. I understand that there was a traffic study had, had, I guess it's been done. I, I kind of was curious to know what the date of that was. That traffic study that's already been done or is it still to be? Just wanted to put my two cents in about, I do live very close to that corner. And Phoenix Auto has cars lined up on both sides of the road before you get to the intersection to take a left, like if I'm going into La Gavista or CVS off of Lowman. And I just wanted to tell you that the traffic is so horrible there. And I understand there's nothing you can do about the commercial lot. I understand that if they're going to do a store, gas station there, that there's, that's out of everybody's hands. But I am highly opposed to turning that residential lot into anything to protect us here on Northland. And we've been here for a long time and love La Gavista. And please just hope that you will consider the protection of us here that live on Northland. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jander.
Yes, I'm Dwight McCurdy's wife. I am the, at 20902 Northland. Been here for two, little over two years. I think it's going to be three years in May. I have three concerns. The first one is I'm wondering if the building needs to be 21 feet tall. It's, if it's got a parapet, couldn't it be lowered to help alleviate some of the commercial size for that lot as far as, just, just it's huge? The second thing is when I leave Northland and travel towards Lowman Ford Road and I want to make a left, I have to dodge right-hand turn lane for that establishment and two travel lanes with no left-hand turn lane for me to go into as an escape route in case I just can't make it across. And the oncoming traffic is an active lane. So those are my two, that's my big concern there. And the third, third thing is all these properties here are an acre or more. And the city only offers 200, I'm sorry, 200-foot clearance, I believe, for impacting the residents of that area. I just think that ought to be increased, given the size of the properties, so that people have a chance to respond. Not everybody's available to see those tiny little posted signs, especially with the parked cars there on that street. And I thank you for the time. And I did send in a written statement to everybody. I, I hope they got it and had a chance to read it. And I look forward to seeing some commercial business there that's going to be conducive to the size of the property without encroaching on a, on a, on a residential zoned property. You're taking away from what we're building, which is residence. We don't need to have a gas station on every corner. This isn't the 60s. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. McCurdy. Are there other public, yes, Mr. Roberts?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would just like to speak to that latter point that the, the last citizen made regarding the residential zoning. I abhor spot zoning. And I believe that zoning in our future land use map, our master plan, is there for a reason. It provides certainty to both residential property owner and commercial property owner. If a person buys a piece of property that's zoned a certain way, they know, that's their expectation. It's going to be C1, C2, whatever. It's going to be R1, R1T, R1D, et cetera. That certainty is just as important for that person when they make that investment as it is for abutting property owners. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Other public comments at this time?
Yeah, one rules short and brief. And thank you, Paul, for those comments. This is Randy Mattson. I, I live at 20703. I realize that you're going to be coming back next month so we can actually see the plans. Obviously, I have a concern. I am directly across the street from where that pond will be. So obviously, I want to know what it's going to look like. And hopefully that if this is approved, I won't see it. And again, just my final comment. My wife and I, you know, we built our house here five years ago. Love La Gavista. As a previous lady mentioned, we have a nice, private, we love Northland Drive. But again, we, we bought the property a year before and it was residential property across the street. Nice looking property. And had it been actually for sale at the time that we were looking at this property, we maybe would have considered buying it. However, if it was commercial property at that time, I wouldn't buy the property and have the house that I live in now. That's really all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Mattson. Any other public comments at this time? There's no further public comments. I'd like to make a motion that this item number two on our agenda be continued to our next regularly scheduled planning and zoning commission meeting. Would that suffice, counselor?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a second? Seconded by Tom Monahan. Any further discussion? No further discussion? All in favor of the tabling? In case?
Yes.
Okay. It would appear that that's unanimous and it'll be tabled until the next regular meeting. We're going to move on to item number three. That's 20-1729-PDD-Rez. Consideration of a recommendation regarding a zoning district change request from TR1 Temporary Restrictive and PDD Plan Development District to a PDD with design approval to be hereafter known as the Nature's Point Plan Development District, a residential resort and wedding venue located at 18504, 18507, 18514, and 1807 Lake Shore Point, approximately 18.039 acres of land in the WB Corwin Survey Abstract Number 2709 Travis County, Texas, and Lot 130-FS of the Marshall Vista Subdivision. And Roy, if you would just kind of update us on this particular item?
Yes, sir. Quite simply, we've been working with this development team for a long time on, on more than one property. After many, many moons of arm wrestling, I'm almost completely happy. They owe me a couple, they owe me a few trees in and along the right of way where their surface parking lots are, which are in our ordinance. And quite frankly, their, their landscape architects did an excellent job everywhere else. I'm sure it was a minor oversight. But we've worked long and hard on this. Other than that, I have no, no more ideas how to make this better. I'm fresh out.
Thank you, Roy. And Roy, if I could, you know, once again, we have a number of potential recommendations that we could make. And is there anything in particular? You know, I've, I've read through those. We have to recommend approval of the application, you know, meeting the requirements of both the concept plan and the detailed plan. Recommend the application as meeting the requirements of both concept plan and detailed plan for a newly established PDD. To recommend approval of the application as a meeting, the requirements of the concept plan, only newly established PDD to be known as Nature's Point and/or to deny, recommend denial of the application. So.
Yes, sir. And that's. And those are in your prerogative, but the staff is of the opinion that it meets the requirements for both the concept and detail plans. You know, with that one proviso which is in the ordinance and we'll get that fixed.
And that referred to the trees, correct, Roy?
They owe, they owe me about six or seven trees.
Okay.
So that means the, that, that would be covered under A then, right in the recommendations?
Yes, sir.
Yes. Any commissioners have questions of the staff at this point? No? Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Roy, and do I read the documents correctly that the most recent PDD for this property was a golf course?
No, sir. This, and this confused everybody. And I almost didn't put it in there. There's a little triangular shaped lot at the entry.
Yeah. I saw it. It seems to come and go from your, your drawings.
Yes. That one lot was in the golf course PDD. It was designated as sewer or something or another. It wasn't an active part of the golf course. It was going to be a sewer plant or something. That one piece of property was in the PDD. The rest of it is newly annexed. Does that, does that explain it?
And when you say, when you say newly annexed, it, it has never been zoned?
Right. It's, that's the TR1 part.
Thank you very much.
That confused everybody, including me, on how to present that.
I feel better.
Let's mark that one down. I'm glad Mr. Brown feels better. No other further questions of the staff? Then we'll move along and ask for the applicant presentation.
I think Erin has to go turn it on. Hang on.
I did. I made Laura presenter and she is muted, so she just needs to be able to pull up her. Yeah.
I think she needs to unmute her mic. We can't hear.
Okay. Can you hear me now? Hello?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I have so much happening on my screen. I'm struggling a little bit. But I wanted to take a few moments of your time and I hope you can see this presentation.
I believe, I believe we can, ma'am. If you could state your name and what you're representing?
Thank you. My name is Laura Canada Lewis. I represent Walters Wedding Estates. And I'm here to present regarding item number three for the Nature's Point Plan Development Zoning. I appreciate your time. I wanted to tell you just a little bit about Walters. When we, when we first came to La Gavista, we became aware that, that La Gavista had experienced several offers by various developers who just couldn't come through. And so I wanted you to know that Walters is a, is a, is a solid company that provides jobs for 250 people. We take wedding venues, resorts, and all of our properties very seriously. This is a real business for us. And we develop first-class properties that would be an asset to La Gavista. I'm sorry, I'm having trouble moving my. As I already said, we've been in business as, Walters has been in business 14 years. We currently own and operate 23 venues in Texas. However, we recently acquired five, four new properties in Texas, giving us 27 properties in Texas and one outside of Texas. We have lodging in two of our locations with planned and approved construction of additional hotels associated with our wedding venues. So we understand the, the projects that we're proposing here are not new to us. We host on average before our recent acquisitions of, of the five new venues, just in the last quarter of 2020, we were hosting 130 to 140 events and weddings every month. So what's important to me to tell you today is that this is our business. It's all we do. And here's a representative sample of some of the venues that, that we own and operate and have constructed over the years. Walters is one of a variety of awards. The Wedding Wire Couples Choice Award, the Knott's Best Weddings Award, the Knott Hall of Fame. They've been on the cover of numerous publications and, and make it their hospitality is all they do. They're not in a variety of other businesses. They focus on the hospitality industry because that's what's, what their core business is. Our proposal for Nature's Point is to construct a, to construct a luxury resort. Our development will include two wedding venues with large ballrooms that'll include restrooms, kitchen, bridal and groom suites, and staff offices. It would have two ceremony outside, two ceremony sites, a restaurant, and it would include cabins and villas. And then in phase two would include a hotel with a spa. Much of this is already included in your packet. And I know many of you have already viewed this. But here's a part of our detailed plan that shows phase one that includes the two wedding venues with the lakeside villas and the co-villas. These are two-story residential structures that are permanent in nature. And then you'll see the, the smaller cabins that are temporary. And my agreement with the city council was that they could not be there more than five years, although we intend to construct the hotels more quickly than that. And then the hotel will take the place of those villas. And I'll show you that detail on this presentation in just a few moments. This is just, shows the topography as it slopes down towards the lake such that the lakeside villas are really not even visible from Lake Shore Boulevard. Here's a concept plan of the cabins. So these are essentially two units married together with a wraparound patio. These are movable and will be removed from the property in favor of, of permanent lodging in the form of a hotel. Here's a concept plan of the lakeside villas. As you see, they'll be set down on the cliff and then have lakeside views. Here's a concept plan of the wedding venue. It it has both a kind of a walkout basement from the bottom as well as what would generally be called the ground floor. Level one has a large patio that outlooks over the lake. And then a partial third floor where the bright suite will be. So phase two includes removal of the cabins, as I mentioned before, construction of the hotel that include, would include the pool, gift shop, gym, spa, office space, and additional parking. And that site plan lays out like this. And here's the topography again. I also included, although this is in, in your, in your packet that was sent to you, just some information about the signage in quite a bit of detail, just that, you know, obviously each lakeside villa or cabin would have a wall sign that indicates the unit number, that type of information. And then wayfinding signs throughout the property. And then a monument gateway sign at the Lakeshore Boulevard. This is the hotel elevation concept plan. It's a four-story hotel. It does have a, a section of the hotel, um, area that has condos, and this is a concept plan for the condos. We did agree with the city to provide a, a barrier wall, um, on the property line that abuts residential structures. Um, and so this is a, a diagram of what that wall looks like. We also provided, um, a look at what the property looks like from Lake Shore Boulevard, um, when it is completed in its entirety, and this is what you would, you would see from Lake Shore Boulevard. I just want to thank you all for your time and consideration. Um, I know these are, um, volunteer positions that you fill, and your feedback is helpful to us, and we certainly appreciate your time.
Thank you.
I'm going to try to give you the screen back, but I don't know if I can figure it out.
You can take it away if, if, if all else fails.
That would be good. Aaron, can you take me away?
Yes.
I, I guess, uh, we can, for those individuals, those, uh, commission members would like to, uh, Tom, go ahead.
Yeah, I like to plan everything, but I guess I'm wondering the, the sense of urgency timing you might have given the COVID situation. I would think COVID hasn't been kind to your business over the past year, so I just, does, I mean, are you in a hurry to do this, or are you kind of more waiting seat till this COVID issue gets over with? Or what, you know, how is that impacting what, how you go forward?
No, sir. We're ready to start construction as soon as possible. We've, we're moving forward with, we're moving forward with our construction documents and hope that we can, um, that we can, you know, meet the requirements of the city and, and get our, request our building permits. We, we have, um, experienced COVID in a variety of ways, just like everyone has felt the impact of, um, of COVID. I apologize. I lost myself for a minute. Um, we, we have, we have felt the impacts of COVID, but quite frankly, we still have strong sales, and we've hosted weddings, um, a large number of weddings every weekend since mid-May. And so the wedding business is continuing. Um, it's, does it evolve? And have we made a lot of changes? Absolutely. But we still, still feel very good about it, and it's one of the reasons we've continued to acquire and grow, and have not modified our growth model.
Okay.
Other, uh, commission members have questions to the applicant? I don't see anyone. All right, if that's the case, then perhaps we can get someone to, uh, close out the PowerPoint? So we can see all the smiling faces. Richard, were you trying to, uh, signal to speak to the applicant? Okay, like, you're, you're, you're in a very tiny screen. It's hard to recognize you. Oh, there you go. Wow. Um, then what we will do at, uh, 9:09, we're going to continue, uh, the public hearing. And so, uh, I see the first person has a hand raised there, uh, Mr. Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I would encourage the commission to approve this. As you, as some of you may know, this is located on Cottonwood Hollow, adjacent to my property on Marilago Drive. I've spoke with Keith Walters.
Yeah.
His group, they're well cap, they're well capitalized. They have every intent of following through with this application, these slides, this business plan. It's not smoke and mirrors. These guys are not presenting a blue sky to get approvals they want, so they can try to flip property or anything with nefarious intentions. They have, what they're doing is consistent with the character of the multimillion-dollar homes that exist on our code. And I love that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I have one question.
Uh, yes, go right ahead. Who is that?
Charlie.
Is there any way we can get this closed? Is there somebody that can help us to close so we can, uh, I, I, you know, I, I have a very, very small computer and, uh...
We're trying, it looks like Laura has to do it, and Aaron's trying to walk her through it.
Uh, I have a question for Laura, though. What, what kind of access do the homeowners that exist out there have through this property? Because the road goes right through it.
That is, the, the road that goes right through it is, is actually the existing road. We have redesigned the property, um, amenities to make certain that, um, the road stays where it is. It's just that it'll be, um, right now it's a very poorly maintained road, and this will be a nice new road, but...
It was a challenge for my truck.
Yes, it's, um, it's always an adventure for me when I visit the property as well. But it will, it will be, um, you know, re- reconstructed and well-maintained, but, but they, they certainly have, they have an easement, um, to use that, that road, and there's no intention to try to prevent their use of it. It's absolutely there for their use.
Right. It, it's a platted easement, and it will be improved, but the easement will be where it is.
All right, is that, is that okay, uh, Charles? Any, uh?
Absolutely.
Public, uh, public comments? Whoa, there we go. I don't see any other, uh, during the public comments, so it's 9:12, and we're gonna close the public hearing and, uh, open it up for discussion amongst the, uh, commission members. Uh, Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I'm, I'm trying to respond to, um, a, a, a comment that's in our packet. And I see that the, uh, author of that comment is, uh, participating in the meeting, uh, Sam Payne. And Mr. Payne, uh, in his comments said, that this is, this property has always been residential in nature and should remain so. I'm, I'm paraphrasing now, by the way. I'm, I don't have it open. But anyway, I, I wouldn't, I'm interested in, um, since this was never zoned, uh, was it ever platted? And, uh, what is, uh, Mr. Payne's, uh, expectation that, uh, this property, uh, remain residential? Thank you.
Well, doesn't look like, uh, Mr. Payne's, uh, he, he, he may be still logged in, but, uh, is not responding, so I guess we can't get any response.
Perhaps Mr. Jambor can, uh, give me an answer.
Well, I know he's always, and you may remember, uh, he had an attorney there last month, and they represented that they, yeah, she was there and she made a comment. They were of the opinion that there's a deed restriction that they think is valid. That they, I think that's it, but that, that's my only guess.
Okay, well...
She read that last month.
Was, was this property that is within this PDD absent the little triangle that was gonna be a sewer, uh, something? Um, was it ever planted as, as residential lots?
It, it is in the county. Uh, there is a plat. I don't know what all that plat shows other than the easement. Laura may remember better than I do. I've laid eyes on it, uh, uh...
Roy?
I'm, go ahead.
Thank you. I believe that that area is where, uh, Mr. Marshall, where his home once was. Mr. Marshall, as in Marshall's Harbor.
The whole, eighteen acres, uh, was one parcel, you think?
Well, this was all originally about a thousand acres, and Mr., I, 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 that's a very loose number, by the way. Point being, it was all of Marshall's Harbor, all of Shore, Shoreline Ranch, Marshall's Vista, Marshall's Point. All of it belonged to Mr. Marshall, and, uh, that's where his original ranch house was, I believe. And I think that might be where, I, I think that might be the correlation to the resident, residential, uh, inference. But I'm speculating.
I move that we ignore Mr. Roberts' comments as, as being highly speculative. But thank you for sharing.
No, that's fine. I appreciate it. Happy to annoy you.
Ms. Lewis, if you would, uh, I see you're trying to, uh, add some clarity to this discussion.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Mr. Brown, um, we have researched, uh, Mr. Payne's allegations that there might be deed that, um, are associated with restricting this property to residential. Two title companies, an engineer and his attorney, have failed to be able to produce anything, that substantiates that. Um, there, it, we don't think it exists. I think it's just a misunderstanding.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis.
Okay, great. Thank you very much, Ms. Lewis.
Any, uh, other commission members? Well, if that's the case, then, uh, regarding, uh, item number three of 20-1729-PDD-REZ, that, uh, the, uh, Planning and Zoning Commission of, uh, Lago Vista, uh, recommend, uh, approval of the application to the City Council of Lago Vista as, uh, meeting the requirements of both the concept plan and detail plan for newly established PDD to be known as Nature's Point, subject to the submittal of a revised landscaping plan showing provisions with both the Phase One and Phase Two surface parking lots that meet our current ordinance requirements. And I'd ask, uh, for a second, it's seconded by Tom Monahan, and I would ask our, uh, city attorney if, uh, that motion is in order.
Well said, Mr. Mr. Chairman.
Did you say well said?
Yes, sir.
Oh, my goodness.
You're getting really good at this.
So it's moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion on this item? Doesn't appear to be, and I think I'll do this by, uh, uh, calling the role, uh, Tom Monahan.
Aye.
And Richard Brown?
Aye.
Larry Hagler?
Aye.
Charles Solomon?
Aye.
John, Don, John Drow?
It's, it's hard, hard to say. Aye.
You ought to try Zaleski sometime when you got a Snoop full.
Yeah.
Uh, Julie Davis?
Aye.
I wonder if that came out the way you intended.
Probably so. And, uh, Gary Zaleski votes in the affirmative. Uh, the motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Thank each one of you so much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis. Moving on to, uh, item number four. The, uh, public hearing and possible, uh, recommendation ordinance amendment, or is, uh, discussion of, uh, in consideration of a recommendation regarding potential amendment to Section 6.10 of Chapter 14 of the Lago Vista Code of Ordinances related to accessory buildings in a single or two-family district. And if you would, Roy?
Yes, sir. Uh, I think the only new thing in there, other than just some, some cleanup of, uh, syntax sort of things, was I added a definition of floor area that was not defined before, but I think everything else you'd seen before.
Right. The, uh, in paragraph D, all districts, uh, D4, exceptions, conditional use permits, some of that looks new to me.
Well, that was, we, we talked about trying to, uh, create an intent section. That, that's the intent section.
Okay. Well, then I have a comment on the intent section.
Okay.
I'm, uh, I guess you have sub-paragraph B, the level of privacy otherwise afforded to adjacent privacy. That seems rather vague, and I do not care for it too much.
Yeah, uh, and let me tell you what the issue was. Uh, aesthetics and how do you, how do you, how do you determine when the setback issue encroachment is okay? Uh, that's what I'm trying to figure out. I, I'm open to suggestions on that one, too, yeah. But that, that's one of the things you can approve is, and you had one not too long ago, where the only issue was the setback.
Yeah, I, I guess I'm not, I'm not in favor of getting into privacy things.
Right.
I mean, we get, we get those types of arguments on height exceptions, and, you know, I, I'm not sympathetic to those arguments, and they're not part of our criteria either. And so the, I don't know, the, the privacy thing is just too vague for me to be, uh, meaningful, I guess.
Right, uh, and, and once again, the, the conundrum, if you would, was let's suppose you have, and have an application, and the only relief sought is a setback. What is the appropriate criteria or intent for approval of a setback variation on a accessory building? And I'm open to suggestions. That, that was the only thing that came to mind.
Well, what?
And, and we could punt and not say anything. But on either one, though, you follow me? If I, if I talk about one, I gotta, gotta talk about the other.
Also see that Larry, uh, wants to be recognized.
I've got a question for Roy, um, and this is in regards to the, uh, floor space are reaching the 50%. When we talk about it, it's everything that's covered.
Right.
Which could be a covered patio, whatever, but that, would that also include if there's a, uh, attached garage under the same roof?
Yes, sir, it would. And, and that's part of the problem. If, if we have an application, uh, that involves a residence that predates 2012, we have no idea what's underneath that roof.
Yeah, I guess I was looking at the square footage of what I consider the HVAC area.
Right.
It's being the logical measurement for living area.
Right, but...
You know, the person with a three-car garage, and there's a lot of them out here that are attached.
Well, right, but we, it's, it doesn't use the word living area. It used the word floor area.
The garage has a floor.
I understand.
Okay, I just...
Well, and that's, that is a prac, that's why we defined it. It, it, it used the term floor area. It didn't define it. And as a practical matter, we really don't know on almost most of your applications, I'd say. Uh, and I'll give you a perfect example, the one on Green Park. We have no idea how big that house is, uh, other than the roof, and how much of it's living area and how much of it's not. And, and most of the ones, quite frankly, that come in front of you, that's our problem. We don't know.
I know when I added a room onto my house, it took, uh, taxing authority about, uh, less than 90 days to have the paperwork changed. My taxes go up showing a additional square footage of HVAC area.
I understand.
Thank you.
Unless, unless we go in and measure their houses, we don't know. Now, we do know on anything since 2012.
I understand.
I know the TCAD can make a request to come out and measure.
Right. Well, and, and like I said, I mean, even if we gave ourselves the authority, you're talking about some serious money and time.
Gary, they didn't request. They came and knocked on my door, and they had to take measure with them.
Right.
You didn't let them in, did you?
They checked the outside of the wall and subtracted what they figured the wall's thickness was.
Right.
Wow. Roy, the, the other comment I had was going up to commercial districts, paragraph C and number three for the height. But I was rereading that thing, and I was wondering if it shouldn't say the height of the accessory building shall not exceed. Oh, it does say it. Or they should not exceed either the height of the principal building or the maximum height specified. Shouldn't say it should not exceed the lower of either the height of the principal building. Just to say that you can't pick one. It reads more like, right now, like you can pick one or the other.
No, no, I, I see what you're saying. Yeah, no. The idea was not to let them have a choice. The idea is it's got, can't be, can't exceed either one of them, the lower of the two.
Yeah, so I think something about the lesser of.
Yeah, that, that easy, easy to fix.
Okay. And I don't know what else to offer in, to replace that or, or replace whose privacy. But I don't know what others think about that.
I just, I, you know, for the most part, well, there, there are two things about setbacks, aesthetics and privacy. And, and depending on which one you're talking about, and what, you know, what the adjacent setbacks of the property are. You know, when it's a front yard, it's aesthetics. There's no privacy issue. Most of the other ones, that's what you're talking about usually. You know, keeping far enough away from your neighbors.
Could it just say no change in the privacy otherwise afforded to the thing?
Right, that, yeah, that's what I mean, similar privacy or something.
Say no change. That sounds a little more specific than the level.
Okay, right, that, no change. That, I, I can live with that.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Uh, yes.
I think Mr. Brown had his hand up first.
Was that Mr. Brown with his hand up? Oh, there he is. Yeah.
Yes, was, was that Ms. Silvera who wants to mention that?
Yeah, she was hoping that you'd get recognized.
My turn comes.
All you gotta do is go to the post office. My picture's always there. I would like to know.
Oh, I don't believe.
I would like to know about the genesis of the 50% number for the calculation of the do not exceed for the accessory buildings. Where did 50% come from? And why, I guess the corollary is, why bother?
I wasn't here, but that's not the first time I've heard that number for accessory buildings.
Do you mean in other parts of your practice?
In other cities, yes.
Uh huh, okay.
I've seen it before. I don't, you know, I wasn't around whoever created it originally. And I certainly weren't around here when you guys did this. But I've, I've heard that, that percentage before.
In those other jurisdictions where you have been familiar with it, did they, did they enforce it?
They, they.
Or was it just sort of a thing?
It was, it was more of an absolute. They, the aesthetics wasn't an issue. It's just you weren't ever building an accessory builder, buil, building bigger than that. It had to be attached otherwise. And other than a zoning variance, that was it.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
In, in response to Mr. Brown's comment or question about the 50%, I too have seen several other cities that have specified percentages for accessory buildings in relation to the primary building on the site. What I would say to that is the character and nature of those particular cities in some instances is very different than the makeup of Lago Vista. You know, in old Lago, we have more of a typical neighborhood, city streets, smaller lots. On, but we do have plenty of areas where there are a lot of folks who have combined multiple lots. And in those particular circumstances, it doesn't seem unusual to allow for much larger accessory structures in comparison to the main structure when the percentage, when, when the percentage of impervious cover applicable to that, that property is not exceeded. That's really what then I've seen the planning and zoning folks look at is, okay, we don't, we're not gonna, the focus isn't on the, the size of the buildings, but the impervious cover.
Thank you. I have a, a follow-up question for you then. In those instances where you have seen this before, does anyone ever put in a second qualifier, like cannot exceed 50%, but if you want it to be bigger than 50%, don't even ask for more than 100%? Or something like that? Because 50% is, is arbitrary, and in the business of the Lago Vista Planning and Zoning Commission, it is toothless, and it is often viewed as a goalpost which anyone who's really eager should push on down the field and, and shoot for as big a number as possible, even numbers that exceed 100%. And so I'm, I'm just, I wonder where the number came from? And I wonder if in other jurisdictions where they use some number, 50 or a different number, if they actually enforce it. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I don't know that I've seen the type of requests for variances or special exceptions to the, this type of requirement in other cities, the same way that we see it here in Lago. I think there's also been a trend for homes that are built in the last 10 years and then going forward that the ratio of the garage to the home is much larger, where people have multiple vehicles. Whereas in years past, a two-car garage was the norm. Now, two and a half and three-car garages are becoming more of the norm, and the houses themselves aren't necessarily as, as big or bigger than they had been in the past. Meaning, the size of the homes has slightly shrunk. The storage accessory building garage space has grown. So it may be more of an issue that it's a trend that's happening. And realistically, from, from, you know, it's, part of it's aesthetics. So it's what do you want your city to look at? Part of it is related to impervious cover. Are we gonna impact, negatively impact water flow across the property? Those two things aside, you know, Roy may have other thoughts on, you know, what considerations you wanna look at if you want to consider changing that percentage? Because beyond aesthetics and effects on drainage, there, you know, there's really not much else that you wanna look at. It's, it's a preference issue.
Well, I'd like to follow up, if I, if I may.
Excuse me? If I, if I could, you know, we have a point in here where we do have discussion. So I think what I'd like to do, to be able to move along, I'm going to continue the public hearing on this so that if there are comments from the public, we could go ahead and address those. So I'm gonna continue the public hearing at 9:36 and see if there are public comments. Yes, Mr. Roberts?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm not allowed to direct my questions to anyone except to the chair. So I would like to direct this question to Roy through the chair. And the question is, is there anything in this revision, in this ordinance revision that would be non-conducive to home offices? And I ask that with a very strong emphasis on future-proofing the ordinance as we see more and more people now that remote working is becoming acceptable and is becoming the norm. I just don't want to see anything in this ordinance that isn't readily apparent that could be prohibitive to that in terms of air-conditioned space, living space. You know, is, is there anything that you see, Roy, that could be a potential problem that we could address now?
As a conduit to Mr. Jambore for Mr. Roberts, if you were able to hear that, Mr. Jambore, if you could reply to me, and I'll be a conduit to Mr. Roberts.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Right, no, there's nothing in this ordinance. However, there, what he's referring to is there's what I call an exception to zoning, and those are the home-based business ordinances. It is not uncommon for those ordinances to include criteria that you must meet to have a home-based business by right without special approvals. One of those is to not use more than a certain percentage of the house, because then it becomes more of a commercial property with a residence as opposed to a residence with a home-based business. The theory is, is that a home-based business is an incubator, although that may be changing. Mr. Roberts is most definitely right. There are now home-based businesses that aren't ever gonna grow and outgrow the house. It is also a very common provision in a home-based business ordinance that limits the percentage of an accessory building that you could use so that somebody doesn't have a massive warehouse for, you know, running a big HVAC contracting business out of there, and they have a gigantic metal building to, to store materials and equipment. Both of those are common, but they don't really relate to this ordinance. They relate to the home-based business. Does that make sense?
Yes, and I, I believe if you could, Mr. Chair, if you could let Roy know that I, I understand him, and, and I understand him to be saying that that's gonna be regulated through the other ordinance, and we don't need to worry about it. This is the bottom line.
That is correct, but those are issues in the other ordinance.
And is that, are those issues in the other ordinance that need to be addressed? And if so, is PNZ the commission that should address those?
Yes, sir. It's a part of the zoning ordinance, like I said, in a lot of ways, and Aaron and I have had this conversation before. In a lot of ways, a home-based business is an exception to zoning. It's, we're gonna ignore the fact that this is residentially zoned property and allow these things under these specific conditions. And yes, our home-based business ordinance needs some work. I'll leave it at that.
Last comment is with respect to Commissioner Brown's comments on the, the numerator, the 50, the 50% number. The one thing that, I, I just, an observation, I'm glad that it's, it's not based on air-conditioned space, but it appears to read, correct me if I'm wrong, that it's just, again, is based on that which is enclosed. So the square footage of the garage counts in that calculation as opposed to just HVAC space. So it gives, it allows for more square footage, which I think is a plus personally. That's all. Thank you very much for your time, Commissioners.
Thank you. Is there any other public comments at this time? If that's the case, it's 9:40, and we're gonna close the public hearing. And we can continue on with further discussion at this time. Is there, Don, were, were you going to make a comment there? I, I didn't, I couldn't tell if you were waving your hand at one point there.
No, I, I very much agree with Paul as far as the tendency to, to have home offices and everything like that. And I'll be delighted to, to help if I can bring those up to where they should be in today's environment. But not, not applicable to this.
Thank you. Other, other comments, discussion at this point? Would it appear that this may have to go back and, oh, excuse me? Yes, Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A minute ago, we were discussing the issue of aesthetics on these accessory buildings. And I think it's a, it's a difficult issue for us to deal with now because we can't regulate materials. And the, the, the fact that our landscape requirement allows a free pass for any openings, overhead doors, personal doors, or windows that don't have to be landscaped or, or, you know, concealed from the road or neighbors or whatever. The issue of aesthetics seems to become a very big deal in, in my mind. And I, I'd, I'd really like the, the commission to see if we can come up with something else, for instance, with regard to landscaping, that because the landscape requirement right now says that plantings have to be up close to the building. Well, if there's, if there are doors and windows and overhead doors and this and that there, and you, you end up with almost no space to do landscaping up close to the building, then maybe there should be a way that we can require other landscaping, perhaps out near the road where doors and windows are not an issue, but for which the landscaping could provide some screening and similarly to the sides for, for screening from neighbors. But it's, to me, if, if you're driving down the road and you see a big metal building in a residential neighborhood, and it's all overhead doors and windows, and so there's no landscaping, and, and it's a, it's just straight out of some metal building manufacturer's kit, that misses our attempt, our opportunity to regulate aesthetics. And we are talking about a residential neighborhood still. And, and so I, I think we. about a residential neighborhood still. And, and so I think we not only should protect the immediate neighbors, but the neighborhood in general, the people, how it sets the tone for the community that, yeah, if you, if you can afford another, another lot next to your house and if you can afford a, a metal building to put on it, then you can just go right ahead and do whatever you want. And, and I, I think that this is not related to home offices, but it certainly could be related to home businesses where the home business has a warehouse component to the business. And I hate to see residential neighborhoods just devolve into semi-commercial look and, and feel and, and not, not just look and feel, but in actuality. I mean, if you're a plumbing contractor and you operate a, a crew of 10 guys running five trucks and every night they come in and out of your warehouse and, and you also receive plumbing supplies in there, well, you can just work your way completely around our zoning requirement for commercial zoning and you don't have to go get a commercial property because you can have an accessory building out of which you operate a home-based business and the trucks all get put in the garage at night. But I, I hope that the commission will carefully consider the landscape issue, the fact that we cannot regulate materials anyway, and some effort should be made to cover up accessory buildings that do not look like the house.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Zaleski. I appreciate your time.
Well, and, and he brings up an issue that it, it wasn't raised as being what we were going to talk about here, but I'll remind you, you know, we had the, the C store on Northland and, and in the design criteria, it says, you know, if you introduce materials that are foreign to a residential neighborhood, we're not going to tell you, you can't use them, but we're going to tell you and you're going to have to landscape them and, and hide them. You might get me and Mr. Brown hung in effigy, but I can write something similar to that here if you want us to. I mean, that's possible. Do you remember that, that language? I mean, I, I don't know how well it's going to be received, but I'll write it if you want me to.
That would be better, not in this ordinance though, right?
I could put it in the landscaping section here that says, we can't tell you what kind of materials you use, but if they're foreign to the residential neighborhood, you're going to hide them with some treason landscaping, just like we do for the commercial properties.
Well, in my view, we could do that and discuss that later, but I don't, doesn't think.
No, no, I, I agree with you. I would bring that back. Your, your two-word changes you could specify what Mr. Brown's talking about requires us to come back next month. I'll write it and you need to see it. And then you can decide whether you want us hung in effigy.
I guess, I guess that's a point, you know, I think, you know, unless there's a tremendous emergency here that will kick it around a little more and bring it back next month.
What? I mean, that's not in these sections before us right now. I think it could be a two-part amendment that would get this part done because that's a whole other section. So we could take that as a two-step process rather than an all-or-nothing process is what my suggestion is. Well, Tom, it, it is in the part of the ordinance that is before us for approval tonight. It's in section B2.
B2, right. And it's, it's in there again later too, about the doors and stuff. It's in, on page 164 of your packet. It's in E, little, little Roman numeral two. About the doors and all that.
No matter. It seems like we got to prove this part and then revisit it. And I mean, part of this is trying to fix problems, trying to improve our ordinances. And the more we think of and delay what we're already trying to fix, the longer the fix occurs.
That's right.
And so, you know, if we have to come back and do it again, but I think, you know, the, the changes that we got before us is kind of what we talked at the last meeting or two. And so it's my opinion, we should approve these changes and then we can, you guys revisit it again for a different paragraph.
Well, if that's enough discussion, Tom, you want to make a motion?
Okay, I'll make a motion.
Item number four.
For agenda item four, accessory building requirements, I make a motion that we recommend city council approve these ordinance changes with additional minor edits to paragraph C3 to include the lesser of and.
4B.
4B?
Yes, sir.
It's also C3. The height?
Oh, yeah. No, right. But the, the one about no change in the level of privacy is the 4B.
That's down further, but, but there's also, there's actually two paragraphs of height.
Right. It's the same change in two, two places.
Correct. That change.
Right.
Then the note in paragraph D4B, the minor change to no change in the level of privacy.
Right.
All right.
Ms. Silver, is that motion going to be able to be sorted out?
Yes, sir. I was able to follow it and I believe Mr. Jamboor is as well. So, yes, sir.
I've got notes.
Thank you. And I'll second the motion. Is there further discussion on the motion? If there's no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
I think I can see everybody but Julie.
Aye.
Thank you, Julie. It was unanimous, the recommendation to the city council. And, you know, unfortunately, it looks like the, where, wherever it went, but it looks like the dog ate the next page of my agenda, but I believe it's to the consent agenda, if somebody has one right in front of them, the consent agenda to approve the minutes of our regular meeting of Thursday, September 10th of 2020, if that's correct. Has everybody had an opportunity to pore over? I know I spent a considerable amount of time wordsmithing this. Yes. And so I make a motion that we approve the minutes of Thursday, September 9th, September 10th, 2020. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been seconded, moved and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Doesn't appear to be any discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
And I believe Ms. Davis, you'd also.
Yeah, I'll say aye. I don't have any recollection of what happened in October, so.
September.
Well. Julie, as a read, as a reading assignment, you, you can pore over the minutes and report to us later, but there's a large enough quorum to approve the minutes. All right. I believe the next item might be to sage advice from our illustrious city council liaison, Mr. Williams.
Yes, sir. How you doing?
If I was any better, there'd be two of me.
It was a long night for you all. The, the first case was a difficult one and you all worked through it. So we'll see where it goes from there. Nature's point, I think that would be a, a nice added plus to that community. So we'll see where that goes. And I guess you'll have on the future agenda item, the landscaping part of number four, brought to you by Roy at the next meeting. I, with Richard Brown's issue on landscaping, I think I need to look at them. And we'll just keep moving forward. I appreciate your time and effort.
Thank you, David. And I guess just to just maybe reinforce, maybe something that we heard from our citizens and was eloquently relayed by members of the Planning and Zoning Commission that our city Lago Vista really has to find a way to develop and adopt a schedule of substantial fines and penalties for some of these unscrupulous people prowling about our midst. You know, the highways are frocked with marauders.
I agree.
I'll tell you, Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Please do.
As the city's prosecutor, the fines that are established in our code of ordinances, especially for zoning violations are at the maximum allowed by law. It's $2,000 a day. And for those folks who get to come and see me as violators, it is looked at, very frowned upon. So they're, they're being put through their paces. I think one of the other things you'll find that Roy's new staff are doing a fabulous job of putting together, really kind of taking a grounds-up look at our permitting structure, the documents, what we're requesting, how we're looking at contractors. And so here, hopefully over the next month or two, you're going to see some really positive changes in the way that the permitting process works and what we're looking at and what we're asking for from our contractors in an attempt to try to catch this on the front end, verifying heights, getting height and additional height information from folks before the framing, at the framing level, getting additional information from contractors regarding their insurance requirements, things of that nature. So both on the backend and the enforcement side and the front end from the permitting side, the staff here is really kind of working both ends toward the middle and hopes to have to bring you fewer of these cases that where the, they're asking for some type of relief because the house is already built. Because those are the most difficult type cases to be objective about.
Yeah. And just FYI.
Thank you very much.
It, it's not pointing any fingers, but we did bring this up very long time ago in Building and Standards Commission and we got shot down the first time. But we will, we will be trying again.
Well, sounds like a future agenda item.
The nature of that board changed, so hopefully we'll have more success.
I certainly hope so.
Okay. I was hoping our meeting might go to 1 o'clock so we could show David that we have the same fortitude as city council.
He'd also be eligible for our overtime pay.
And Aaron and I will quit.
We're just taking a nap out of the desk and, you know, randomly chime in.
We, we have one of these almost every night, guys.
Well, if we, if, if nobody's suggesting any, it would appear that there's enough items out there that we'll not have to be terribly concerned about future agenda items. If somebody has something at this point, if you don't have a suggestion for a future agenda item, I think next on our agenda is that we will adjourn at 10 o'clock PM, 10 o'clock sharp.
Y'all made it to 10 o'clock. That's a good thing.
Not a contest, gentlemen.
Have a good one.
Good night.
Good night.